I'd call a meeting to order. This is a joint public hearing, meeting April eleventh, 2022. I'll call this meeting to order. First is the approval of the agenda.
Second?
This is moving second all in favor. Motion passes. We have a public hearing number one, and I declare public hearing number one open. It's on utility allocation policy and for staff presentation. Mike?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, members of the planning board. The first of the public hearings tonight is regarding a topic that we've discussed at previous work sessions and meetings, specifically as it relates to how we address increasing development and utilize the water and sewer allocation that we were granted by the city of Raleigh as a leverager towards getting quality development. Some of this will probably be a bit of a repeat for the board commissioners, for the planning board, some of this will be brand new. To provide an overview, a utility allocation policy is a method of requiring improvements above what the U D O would otherwise require to allow for connection into the municipal utility system, specifically the water and sewer. While the city of Raleigh owns the infrastructure system, we own the actual allocation that's associated with it. The water and sewer is a finite resource based on our contracts. And while we do have a fairly good supply of both, it's best to manage these well to make sure that we're getting high-quality development so then when a heavy water sewer user does come into town, we have that allocation available. To accomplish this, it requires two things going tonight, as well as the next meeting. First of which is an amendment to chapter one of our unified development ordinance to require these developments to meet the water allocation policy, and part two is the actual policy itself. A utility allocation policy starts out with base points. These points are associated with uses, and different use categories will have different points. To make up the remainder of the 50 points that'd be required, you have to achieve those through bonus points, and those are increased development details, and we'll go into details in a little bit. They're broken into three categories of nonconformity abatement and public infrastructure improvements, green development standards in building and site design, as well as outdoor enhancement and transit improvements. There's a fourth category that's only specific to residential developments, which specifically addresses increased amenities. Once again, these are above and beyond what the U D O would otherwise require. As I noted, an applicant would require 50 points in order to connect into the municipal water and sewer system. Base points is where this really all starts. The point values range from 15 for single-family detached residential subdivisions up to 45 for uses that we want to come into our town, such as mixed-use developments. The structure that was put in the packet is based on best practices, what other communities nearby us, as well as some of the other counties are currently doing in terms of where their point value and their structure is set up. These are adapted to Zebulon. As an example, we need a hotel. Knightdale has the nearest hotel, but it's something that we need, especially in relation to Five County Stadium, NAMCO, GSK, the Inventions. As folks fly in or drive into the town, we need to find a place where they stay. So we adjusted those points, as an example, to increase the base points to help leverage that as a potential incentive for those activities to come into town. It also corresponds to the future land use plan. We looked at the distribution of percentages of residential to non-residential and evaluated, okay, how would that point structure be based for something that's applicable to our future development 15, 20 years down the road? It's also reflective of the market. One of the things that we're seeing a lot more of is reinvestment into our downtown areas. There's an increasing population that wants that pedestrian-oriented type of development, where they can live near where they go eat, where they, for entertainment, where there's schools. So really reflecting location in terms of infill development and redevelopment of some of the existing buildings. The bonus points are how you make up the rest of it. The first of the categories is the nonconformity abatement and public infrastructure improvements. Things such as the removal of pole signs would count. Right now, if a site is redeveloped and they keep the pole sign, such as Triangle East Shopping Center across the street, they're able to do that because the pole sign is an existing nonconformity. It was prohibited in the later versions of our zoning code, and that carried over into our unified development ordinance. We now require those to be monument signs. However, if they were to eliminate that pole sign and put it as a monument sign, they could get up to three points for that. Another example is a maximum of 10 points for enhanced roadway infrastructure. If their T I A calls for something where it might only be a four-way stop or even a two-way stop, but they go through and enhance it with a roundabout or other transit feature, roadway feature, it could bring it up to 10 points for that. And then off-site greenway improvements, we incentivize that because we do have those areas where it might be town-owned, where we need the developers to help us connect in the greenways. Having these little segments of greenways is terrific for the nearby neighborhoods, but part of the goal is to really create a comprehensive greenway system, a network of opportunities to get folks off of the roads and onto bicycles and pedestrians. The next of the bonus point categories is green development standards and building site design. Things such as conservation of stains of trees. We have a lot of areas of town that have really terrific stains of pine trees and other natural areas. In areas where they could develop these, preserving those would get them 10 points. Same thing with parking lots and stormwater. Right now, a lot of these, the stormwater is just handled with your standard grates that eventually flow into stormwater ponds, and depending upon the levels and the rainfall, some of those may flow into the Utter Catch Basins. Things such as the bio-retention device shown in the middle picture there really traps in oil and the cementation that comes off of vehicles and prevents that from getting into the stream system. So it's an environmental benefit as well as an attractive one because it enhances the visibility and reduces the urban heat model of heat building off of the asphalt in these parking lots. The last of these examples is a maximum of 20 points for building and site design. This is really geared towards residential because right now, if a development comes in, for residential development and meets all the standards of our ordinance, it doesn't have to come in for a conditional rezoning. Well, we don't have a mechanism otherwise to really require them to meet architectural conditions for one- and two-family homes. We do allow for some density bonuses if they do, but they don't always take that opportunity. This is an opportunity for us to make sure that we're getting high-quality homes in situations that might not otherwise require a conditional rezoning. The next category is outdoor enhancement. And I broke outdoor enhancement and transit improvements into two for clarification. The first one is, they could get up to 10 points for these enhancements. This is a great example of what's possible. This is the Sweetwater development off of 64 in Apex. It's a mixed-use development, and instead of having just a standard sign saying Sweetwater, they actually create a structure, they create a destination point for pedestrians. It's a sense of welcoming. It also enhances a reason to be there and creates a very substantial gateway for the development. The same thing with outdoor areas such as parks. This is an example of a park that's located just outside of a residential neighborhood. In this particular situation, a developer acquired an additional parcel to put this in because, once again, it created an attractive feature for the residents there, but it became a public park. Transit improvements are something that the town definitely needs more of. These could get up to eight points, and it's going to be subject to location. This is not only thinking short term, but also long term with possibility of increasing bus stations. At some point, we're going to be eligible for mass transit in terms of like a circulator system. Right now, Cary and Raleigh both have circular systems. Apex is supposed to start this summer if they haven't already done so. We're on the same growth trajectory as Apex is, and they wish they would have had this set aside years ago because some of the older neighborhoods are the areas that they need this the most. So this is one way to incentivize that. The other is park and ride. We have situations where traffic is increasing. I noticed this morning, even coming into, into work, the amount of traffic on 264, 64 was, was pretty substantial even going east. These park and ride opportunities are one way to reduce the number of vehicles that are on the road and can be used in conjunction with other things, such as a possible light rail system, east trans that's been on the plan for a while, where you create a park and ride over by Five County Stadium and then eventually go into downtown Raleigh. Granted, that's going to be 40, 50 years out, but it's good to start planning for these kind of opportunities now. The last of the categories, as I mentioned, is specific to residential projects and really focuses on the amenity packages. Things such as private greenways could get somebody three points. Now, these are not to our town standards. These are typically a little bit narrower and often a mulched trail, and they'd be owned and maintained by the HOA. However, it does create connections between the homes and the public greenway system to further incentivize usership of our system. Pools. We live in North Carolina in wonderful days like today. I'm sure that there was a lot of kids that during spring break wishing they, they had a pool in their neighborhood open. Most of them don't open this early, but having those recreation opportunities. Outdoor decks and patios. It's an opportunity for folks to gather and really create that sense of community within our neighborhoods. It's something that we're seeing more and more of a need for, and these places are becoming more and more utilized for when they do provide them. Pool amenities. When I was, when my wife and I were looking for a home, the first thing that my son saw on the advertisement was a pool slide and said, we have to move here. And at first, I thought it was a resort, but seeing how often that gets used by the families within these neighborhoods really creates the idea that while some neighborhoods are getting away from pools, this is a wonderful thing for children. Clubhouses. These could range anywhere from a small gathering space with a kitchenette up to something very grand. With this, could get a maximum of 10 points. The other is active or additional active recreation. We're seeing this a lot more throughout the country, especially in adjacent to greenway systems, where these outdoor fitness centers are not only for like kids running and playing, but also for adults. The idea of working out outside, especially in a post-COVID world, has become more and more attractive to folks within certain communities. So encouraging developments that have these will be beneficial to not only those who live there, but also those who may be passing by in a greenway. To summarize, a developer will need to obtain 50 total points. The, these are made up of the base points plus five to 35 points. And in order to accomplish this, we'll need to amend the U D O to require or compliance with the, the policy, and of course, adopt the policy and the points which can be then amended periodically. Staff's recommendation tonight is obtain public comment, refer the matter to the planning board, and then hopefully approve the U D O amendment at the next meeting, as well as approve the policy at the next meeting. And I am available if you have any questions.
Yeah, I have a question under category two.
Okay, redevelopment standards and building set design?
So I'm assuming that this would mean that if someone, if a developer were to create a conservation subdivision, that it would be any land above and beyond what the conservation subdivision land set aside is?
That is correct. These would be going above what the requirements of our unified developments would be.
Okay, all right, awesome. And then can you, on, on the previous page, there is religious institutions. Do you happen to know off the top of your head how many we currently have in Zebulon?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
No? Okay.
Two quick questions. Some of these points can like be an extra 10 points and can somewhat be subjective. Who actually assigns the points? And then there is any approval by the board once the points have been assigned?
The points will be determined working with the applicant through our technical review process, which is made up of planning staff and a member of all the additional departments, as well as input from N C D O T, Wake County Environmental Services. In some situations, we bring in Wake County building inspections as well.
I'm just looking ahead. I can see a situation where one developer may get 10 points for a clubhouse, and another developer only gets four points, and the, you know, who's making that call? Because it appears it could be subjective.
Yeah, in those situations, if there's concerns with, you know, not being consistent, a lot of these projects might come before you as a conditional zoning or a planned development. The water allocation policy will still need to be adhered to, and those points and those point structures would be part of that application. So in those situations, it'd be included as part of the conditions. For situations where they don't require a rezoning, then it would be just T R C that would review and approve those.
To piggyback off what Larry, just where Commissioner Laus just said, the subjective part, if you were to say change jobs or something like that, the next man coming behind would totally understand this program? You feel comfortable with that?
Based on the details inside of our unified development ordinance?
Correct.
I believe that they would. It's, this is a program that is consistently applied in other Wake County communities.
Okay.
And the way our unified development ordinance is structured, in many ways, is actually superior to some of the neighboring communities in the amount of detail and clarification. Piggy that, or piggy that back off of the comprehensive land use plan, the transportation plan, and our parks and recreation plan, it provides a very clear guidance of the expectations of these developments, and using those resources, it provides a very clear picture of what these expectations are.
When you're talking about hotels, motels, or other accommodation service establishments, are those, would any of those be captured in category four, which says projects with residential components, or is that something different?
That would be something different.
Okay. Where would those be mostly captured?
The projects with residential?
If, if someone comes in and builds a hotel?
Yes.
Which one of, which one of these categories are going to best capture where they're going to be looking for their additional points?
Categories one, two, three, yeah, categories one, two, and three would...
Two and three?
So let's say it is hotels, motels, and other accommodation services start out at 42 points. If they are able to meet LEED gold certification, that's 50 points right there.
Because a LEED certification?
LEED gold is eight points.
Okay, so certainly if we wanted to say that hotels, motels, and other accommodations, we could change that to 40 base points in the hopes that they're going to choose to be platinum LEED members, or pick up those other points in some other fashion, right?
That's a possibility. I just looked for what had an eight next to it, and that was the first one that popped up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But it could be everything from a landscaped green roof for five points, and then they pick up off-site greenway improvements that lead to, to their hotel. So there's, it could be a combination of the different points.
Okay.
Any other questions from any of the commissioners? Any questions from the planning board?
So if, going back to what Commissioner Baxter was talking about, the hotel, so if they include pools and indoor pools and things like that, that's all part of the bonus point structure?
No, the pools, pool slides, those are applicable only to residential developments.
Okay. Oh, I see that. Okay. Sorry about that.
On the other hand, if somebody were to construct a hotel motel and make it into a full mixed-use, let's say they had a retail component with that, or a restaurant on the first floor that you see in a lot of these hotels, suddenly that changes the classification to a mixed-use. Actually, never mind, hotel motels, they have higher than mixed-use, so. But yeah, the, there's a, there's a lot of options that are still applicable to them, just not those additional amenities.
And they have to make the improvements to get the points. There's no other way to, there's no way of buying points or anything?
So under the categories, you have business, office, professional services, and then finance and insurance center. Those, aside from the finance and insurance and specifying business, they seem to be identical in their descriptions, both over 100,000 square foot and both require 150 employees, meeting the median or the average wage of Wake County. Is there supposed to be a difference, or should those be one unit together?
There was...
I'm sorry, between what two, Michael? I didn't hear that.
The business, office, professional service center, and then the finance and insurance center.
Okay, thanks.
They're both 45 points. And I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo, because they are almost verbatim the same with just swapping out finance, insurance, or business.
And if necessary, these could be combined. The finance and insurance center also talks about pulling And if necessary, these could be combined. The finance and insurance center also talks about pulling financial risk by underwriting insurance and annuities. I don't recall if that's in.
That just seems like a description of an insurance company.
Yeah. And if necessary, these two could just be combined into a single.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't supposed to be some number difference, like, okay. And then under the mixed use development, the transit oriented, it makes reference to First Avenue and Robertson Street in Old Town Nightdale?
That's a.
As an example?
From their description.
Wasn't sure if that was an example. So do we have a designated zone at this point?
That was Horton and Rendell.
Okay.
Said Horton and Rendell?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, I'm just going down this list here. The mixed use development urban infill. Do we see that as being too low on the point scale? If we want to start having focus on the downtown and infill properties, do we want to bump that up towards something similar to a hotel to kind of get that range incentivized? Or do we feel that 40 points is adequate for that? I think that's an open question for everybody.
I think that we can massage any of these numbers the way we feel like how we want to drive the development. So if the planning board thinks that any of these numbers need to be adjusted, I actually have made adjustments on my sheets. I encourage you guys to talk about where you might change those numbers either up or down, just so that we like have an understanding of what your thoughts are.
Agreed, okay. And then category four under the private greenways. My concern for those is that that's putting a low burden on the developers, but then in turn putting a higher burden on the HOA to maintain those. Whether they're mulch-filled paths or not, those are easily washed away. So I'm just looking at the future maintenance of that. And a developer could say, oh, I can get a quick point out of that, and then brush it on down the road to somebody else. So that's kind of my concern on a private greenway that's not developed in a way that's maintained to our town standards to give that longevity and a lower maintenance cost. So I would like that to be looked at from a.
Do you think that crushed rock might be a better option?
I think that as a whole, it should probably be up to the town's standard greenway so that it can at some point, if ever desired, to be connected.
Be tied in.
And then it can also be, we know that the town's greenways have a pretty long lifespan designed into them, whereas those don't when they're just mulch or gravel. So I would like them to see up to town standards.
Just a housekeeping thing, Michael. Is this on wheels?
I don't know.
Is this putting it on wheels? Because I can't even see, Michael, at all. Thank you, that's better, that's better, that's so much better.
Moving this back and the cameras are probably.
No, don't move.
We need our table back. That's all I've got at the moment.
Okay.
I think that's a good point, Michael, about the mulch. Because that would be putting a burden on members of future HOAs, and they might just want to throw that together just to be able to gather those points. So thank you for that.
Any other questions from the planning board?
Oh, I got another one.
Oh, sorry.
And then, so all of the other uses not categorized? I know it's a catch-all, but so if we go back and look at, I'm going to use the business one again, that has a square footage requirement of 100,000 square feet. So if a building comes in or a service center comes in at 75,000 square foot, would that now fall back into that catch-all of all other categories not specified? Or is there a threshold that we would catch something else at?
I'd like a little bit more understanding of what that could entail.
It just seems, I don't know if we need to have a sliding scale for that business portion or not. Because it seems like someone says, okay, well, I can get 98,000 square feet, but I don't hit that 100,000 threshold. Now I'm kicked all the way back down to the bottom of the scale. And it could be something we really do want, so.
And we, yeah, we could put in.
Like if it's a ratio or percentage or something like that, that we can kind of work with.
Yeah, business, office, professional service center with a lower threshold and put it in the 30-point category, I think would be appropriate.
For under 100,000, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so putting in something like.
Just like a lot of times, we go with like 50,000 square foot medical office buildings or something like that.
And then there should be a lower floor as well.
Put that in around 35 points. Actually, the single-use office would meet a lot of those characteristics. And that already has 30 points. Yeah, we can take a look at it.
Is that solely for newly constructed, though?
Yeah. I guess then if we say single-use retail, do we need to change that? I guess do we need to define whether it's a single tenant or a single use? Because I mean, you could have multiple tenants in a smaller building that still meets that same feel or intent, right? But I don't want to put somebody in a pigeonhole trying to figure out if we belong down at 38 points or 30 points or 20 points, when they're really doing something that is desirable or needed for the town, but they're just falling just short of a threshold.
So you're thinking putting them near where the retail commercial center points, 38 points were? For, as an example, that's 50,000 square foot, something comparable to that? Anything less than that, falling into that 20 base point category?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, that's an easy adjustment.
And I really feel like across the board that some of these base points need to be lowered just to get some kind of striving to either do more than one of the upgrades or to like actively pursue like the platinum LEED certification. Because telling a business office that they just have to get five, I get it that we want it to be easy-ish because we want to encourage those types of businesses to come here. But I still, I would love to be able to see them actively like going through the menu and like not necessarily, well, I'll just pick out what gives, you know, eight points and I need five, or I'm just going to pick five points because I just need five. Whereas they might say, well, I need 10 points, so I need to do a five, a three, and a two somewhere.
Yeah, I completely agree with you with wanting these developers to accommodate more. Part of that balance is also taking into consideration what the neighboring communities are doing, because if we make it overly burn some, they might be looking to locate down the road versus the town.
Yeah, but I think that some of these are just, they're small, kind of easy fixes to be able to get points. And so I would just like to see maybe more of a discussion as far as like, does a business office center need to be 45? Or should we say that 40 is going to be great because then that might make them actually build a better building?
Yeah, also under category four, and I'm sure the planning board will probably look at this even closer, but I can get 10 points if I do a commercial coffee shop, or I can get 10 points if I do an 18-hole golf course. Obviously, I'm going to put in a four-stool coffee shop and get my 10 points versus a golf course, I mean.
And just to clarify, I saw the statement in there that unless the applicant can get all of their points in one use, they have to go across multiple categories. So in other words, the builder, if he starts at 15, can't make up all 35 just from category four?
That's correct.
So they have to do something other than amenities?
That's correct. And part of that is to encourage specifically taking a look at section 2C, building and site design.
So going back to your statement, Larry, which I kind of agree, who's putting in an 18-hole golf course if they can put in a four-stool coffee shop? Unless that's the type of development, I mean, because clearly there are some developments that are centered around the fact that they're going to build the golf course. And that's one of, you know, they're selling points. Do we make, do we increase the number of points in those areas then? Is that what you're saying? Or do we lower how many points you get for a coffee shop?
I'm trying to look at it both as from Mike Clark's desk, as well as if I were a developer. And I'm trying to figure out where the happy medium is, because we're using this to drive what we want. But if I'm a developer, I'm also going to be looking the quick way to get 50 points. But so the points ought to be tilted towards what we want.
There's also with this analysis, kind of determining, okay, what is going to have the greatest impact for the most people associated with that particular development? Are folks more likely to go up and get a cup of coffee or go play 18 rounds or to 18 holes?
Yeah, and is it a public course versus private? You know, also pops into it.
But you know, if we're looking to step up the type of product that is being built in Zebulon, then encouraging someplace, you know, a developer to build a golf course means that they're going to also have to build a higher-end house to be able to make it financially feasible. And I'm okay because I would like to have some higher-end offerings.
Would putting a definition of a commercial coffee shop, square footage, or total people served, be something that would?
That would help. Otherwise, I'm looking at it and I'm saying, okay, I'm doing a four-stool coffee shop, small counter, a couple pastries, boom, I'm commercial.
Yeah.
An AirPod.
There you go.
Well, I mean, if we look at a full kitchen and over 4,000 square feet of meeting space, you're looking at somewhere around an 8,000 to 10,000 square foot building. So I mean, if we put that at the same size as a commercial kitchen and a coffee shop, I think we either need to develop what a coffee shop is with a square footage requirement and what other serving amenities it may or may not have, or we need to look at bumping that down a few notches to fit within the other meeting spaces without kitchens or with kitchens. But I think if we can develop what a definition of a commercial coffee shop is, would be the first step.
So there's two options there, is putting in those square footage details or putting in smaller square footage details and less points?
Yeah, or just redefine commercial coffee shop to a restaurant or some other kind of eatery, something of that nature that we can define as what that use is. Because like Commissioner Laus was saying, a coffee shop could be a lot of things. It could be a cart that someone serves coffee out of, but.
And once you get into a restaurant, that goes into a whole new classification in of itself.
Yeah.
When we look at the major subdivision, right now the base points are sitting at 15. And so then you go over to the building and site design, and it says you'll get 10 points just for building houses and townhomes. Right? You're getting an extra 10 points? Or are we just going over to category four for that?
No, it would be for houses and townhomes, 15 points respectively. That'd be for a mixed product neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be just standard of one or the other.
Gotcha.
And for those, they would have to exceed the architectural recommendations of chapter five.
Okay.
Any other questions? Now we will take public comment. Is there any public comment? Anyone wishes to speak in favor? We don't have, we have anybody online or email? Okay. Anyone wish to speak for or against? We have none. Since there's no one else who wishes to speak, we'll close the public hearing and refer this matter to the planning board. And we'll move on to public hearing number two, commercial dumpster enclosure. I declare a public hearing. Did I close the last? Okay. I declare a public hearing open after a staff presentation.
Good evening. Right now, our dumpster regulations within chapter five would allow for something like this. This is actually an example here in Zebulon. The intent of the dumpster enclosures realistically needs to be to prevent visibility of the dumpsters, prevent the garbage and debris from blowing around outside of the dumpsters. However, the majority of the dumpster enclosures that we see today, which are permitted by our unified development ordinance, are wood-paneled systems that at one point they may or may not have had doors. But because of the commercial activity and the uses associated with them, this type of construction tends to wear out pretty frequently. So you have situations like this. Sometimes they still do have the doors. However, you can tell that they've been patched up and the panels have been reapplied. And then they may try to paint them to kind of minimize the impact. But often that just kind of further enhances the situation. And then you have some situations where you might have this, where at one point it was a chain-linked fence around it with the little plastic slats that were put into almost as an intention of trying to block the visibility. But as you can see in this example, you have weeds that have grown up into the wired chain-linked fence. The slats, for the most part, are long gone, as well as the gates. So realistically, the intent of screening these from view no longer exists. And unfortunately, that's a situation that we have been replicated with some of our new developments within the town. We have worked with the developers, and in certain situations, they've been willing to accommodate our guidance. But it really needs to be codified as part of our ordinance. So what we're proposing would require something like this. Specifically, that the exterior of the dumpster enclosure be constructed of the same materials as the primary structure. So as an example, if this was adjacent to a structure that had red brick on it, this would be the appropriate treatment for that enclosure. Not only does this look better. Not only does this look better, but it's also far more secure in terms of less likely to get damaged, easier maintenance, because that wood does decay over time. The other part is it has greater durability. With the bowiers that are put around it, less likely that a car is going to bump into it and knock it over. If it's a brick structure, even less of a situation. We also require as part of the text amendment, metal door systems. These can be set up in multiple applications, such as this, where it's just a black panelized vertical T-111 aluminum siding that's put on a pipe frame, something like this, where it's actual individual aluminum panels, to something like this, where they actually integrated some architectural character to the structure itself. So staff's recommendation is to tonight obtain public input for the text amendment to Chapter 5, which would require that dumpster enclosures for commercial uses and mixed-use developments meet these additional standards. Then I recommend referring the matter to the planning board and adopting the regulations at the next meeting. And I'm available if you have any questions on this item.
Yes, so under the Design Enclosure A, it says "vertical wood fence panels." Now, if I wanted to get around that, I'd just switch those panels and make them horizontal, and technically, I would be in compliance, correct? And so would it make more sense just to say that any wood panels are out of compliance and prohibited?
Normally, I would agree. However, there are situations, especially with the new architectural design standards, where they might use like a wood synthetic panelized system. As an example of this, the, of all places, the Family Dollar on Smithfield Road in Knightdale. They have, their dumpster enclosure replicates the exterior building materials, where it's a combination of brick and wood, where those wood panels are put in between individual brick columns at a horizontal spacing. And it's not an actual true wood, it's a synthetic composite material. But it's to replicate the appearance of wood, which was the same material used on this primary structure.
So we could say no natural wood fence panels?
We could, yeah.
Okay, because wood degrades and wood gets janky-looking. And then also, what I didn't notice on here was prohibition to cinder block. And cinder block also has a much more low-rent appearance than some of the other design standards that we have tried to capture in the UDO.
In most situations, with the exception of some of the industrial uses, a regular gray cinder block building wouldn't meet the building design standards of Chapter 5, and therefore, the materials on the exterior of the structure would not, that material would not be able to be used on the dumpster enclosure either.
So unless, unless the building is made from cinder block, the dumpster would be prohibited from being made from cinder block?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, we can modify that to, instead of vertical, we can just change that to natural wood panels?
Yeah, three other items or comments. And you assume if you have a dumpster enclosure, that you have a dumpster in there? But I have sent you photos of several people in town that decide they can just put their trash in a trash bag or a cardboard box and throw it in there, and that constitutes their refuge area. Number two, I love the idea of shared dumpster spaces. So rather than a development having numerous dumpsters, that we somehow promote them sharing a common dumpster area. And then we also have, as you mentioned in your presentation, some fenced-in ones using the chain-linked fence, where they've got clever at some point in time and put the little basket weave in there, which is now completely deteriorated and falling apart and blowing around. Can we somehow address fixing those back up? Because they're really a nice, or it looks like a mortar went off near them and just shattered them.
Yeah, we have some, in our general law regulations, we do have some methods through code enforcement to address them blowing around in terms of replacement. Part of it's going to be dependent upon what were the regulations in place at the time that those were developed, or those were constructed? And were those details included as part of the development approval set? Looking back at some of the developments from many years ago, this was not something that was even taken in consideration. So unfortunately, the dumpsters became afterthoughts, where they might just have included a location on the site plan of where the dumpster is going to be located. But there was no details or anything associated with the actual enclosure.
Do we have any type of a catch-22 maintenance clause? So for example, there are a couple places in town where businesses put a fence up to act as a buffer between them and another entity, and then the fence panels either blow over or get torn up? That we can have them at least go back in and take it back to what it should look like?
If it was included on part of their site plan, then yes. Site plans need to be maintained continuously until the property is redeveloped. We do this with trees within parking islands, as an example. If a tree dies and they don't replace it, we contact them to let them know that we have an intent. It was approved as part of the site plan, you need to replace it.
Because I'm thinking most of these, I'm going back to my Board of Adjustments days, but I know we had a buffer requirement. And a lot of times, we've asked people to put trees and shrubs or fence in, and then the trees die, the shrubs die, and they don't get replaced. So somehow, we ought to have a little maintenance catch-22. We can catch back up and get on top of some of those things.
Yeah, as long as it's included on the site plan, it's enforceable.
Just one quick question for me. So those currently now, the first photograph you showed, I know where that building is located. How will that affect, this change affect that building directly? They would have to kind of come up to code, or...
This particular building, we've received four inquiries, four or five inquiries, since the first of the year for the redevelopment of this site. This would be triggered once the site is redeveloped. If they make modifications to the site that includes the dumpster, then it needs to be brought in compliance with all of our standards in our Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay, because I know this area, it was like a donation site over there that kind of got caught in the middle of that. So people started coming like, I know it can look a little rough over there. So I just tried to figure out how that currently would affect that area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions from commissioners? Any questions from the planning board?
So for the design standards, could you make reference back to the screening requirements in the other section of the UDO? Just kind of like you do in other places where it says right above that in the offshoot parking, it refers you back to section 3.8? Just so that they can have a criteria of how much needs to be screened, or how to screen it, or how high these walls need to be?
I agree, because this is just, it just tells us what's not allowed. And I'd like people to be able to find what is allowed.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I can reference back, because I don't recall the screening, the number specifically, but there is a detail in there for, for minimum requirements.
Yeah. So they don't put a two-foot-high wall for a six-foot-high dumpster?
Yeah, so that'll be H2 and then F2.
Just for clarification, can you explain the rationale between H2 with the coloring or the coating of black, gray, or similar neutral colors? Just trying to get an understanding.
It's to have it set off in the distance as opposed to be highlighted.
Okay.
So it's not red, or pink, or orange?
Definitely not orange.
Does that, so going back to the one that you pointed out as an architectural feature, is that, I mean, it's, I guess it is gray, so... Okay, so as long as it, it just seems weird to me. That's fine.
Anyone else from the planning board wishes to speak? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wishes to speak against? Anyone wishes to speak for or against? Hearing none? Public hearing is referred, I would refer the matter to the planning board, and the public hearing is closed. The third public hearing is a stormwater control measure landscaping. I declare the public hearing open and ask for staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stormwater control measures, for the duration of this presentation, I'm just going to refer to these as ponds, because that's how most people know them, as stormwater ponds. Stormwater control measure is the technical term, thanks to the state of North Carolina, which changed it a couple of years ago from BMP, which was Best Management Practices. Still don't understand that one, but... Right now, this is what we permit for stormwater landscaping. Stormwater control ponds have been historically recognized as essentially utility features, kind of an afterthought to prevent the stormwater from flowing where it shouldn't be. We do have regulations that require post-construction runoff from these developments to be retained on-site. So it doesn't increase the stormwater flowing into the creeks, as well as into neighboring properties. However, right now, we allow for the sod, the grass, to be planted right up to the water's edge. We really don't require anything in terms of in the water. This not only has aesthetic, but also has some environmental issues with it, with fertilizers getting into it with destabilization. Heavy rains tend to wash the sod and the soil out from underneath it. And as that water fluctuates, you'll have areas where there will be just exposed earth. And then you'll have areas during high-water times where the sod might be underwater for some serious amount of time, further killing off where that sod line is. However, what we're proposing would be a couple options. One would be to activate the space, to create the pond into an amenity. Things such as fishing piers, fountains, benches, create an attraction for these developments, some reason to go to these ponds, as opposed to just walk past them. Another is vegetative screening. We're seeing this increasingly throughout the country. There's not too many communities that are really full in terms of what we're proposing within Wake County. But there are a couple, and more so, these type of requirements are consistent with these higher-end developments. Granted, this is a pretty excessive example, but it illustrates what is possible. Where you have those tree line adjacent to the pond, and then they actually did both, activated it with the fountain and the greenway, as well as the vegetation on the outer, the outer boundaries of the pond. The other component that we're proposing as part of this text amendment would be in-pond plantings. And part of the reason for this is it really stabilizes, and is probably the best way to stabilize that soil surface under the water. These ponds will fluctuate in height based on drought conditions or heavy stormwater conditions. Having those pond plants in the perimeter of the, in kind of the marshy area around the outer boundaries, really establishes that foundation, because those roots go in, keeps the soil there, and prevents that soil sedimentation from then ending up in our stream system. It also enhances the natural habitat. We have a lot of land that's under development, and it's displacing a substantial amount of habitat. This is one mechanism where we can start to recapture some of that. It also really helps in environmental factors, because a lot of the sedimentation that comes off of these developed properties includes fertilizer. There's different pollutants that come off of the streets. Having these plants be able to purify and clean this before it goes into either the groundwater or the adjacent streams is one way that we can preserve the natural resources in around us. So the staff recommendation tonight is to obtain public comment, to refer the matter to the planning board, and to approve the amendment to section 5.6.19 to establish landscape regulations at the next meeting. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions from any commissioners?
Yes, so one of the things that we struggle with here in Zebulon are large mosquito populations. And as most people know, doing things like blanket spraying for mosquitoes actually kills indiscriminately. And so I would suggest that we include some kind of verbiage for multi-tiered aeration systems. So as the level fluctuates, there are, there's a top-tier aeration, but it doesn't necessarily have, you know, like as the water level decreases, it is still able to turn over the water, which will prevent mosquito larva from being deposited.
That's something that we can look into, and that's also part of the reason...
Fountains work wonders to help with that. But as levels decrease, sometimes the fountains have to be shut off. But there's still, in the lower areas, still standing water can occur.
Mm-hmm. And that's also part of the reason that we wanted those, that progression of plantings into the system based on the NC State Extension Office recommendations. When we were researching this, we found that the natural wildlife frogs, fish, other items, also help to decrease that mosquito population.
But then we would have to stop, at least with fish.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from commissioners? Any questions from the planning board?
So at our work session, we had talked about this issue, and I still don't see anything about the safety of having these types of barriers. Because I see a lot more wildlife being prone to those areas, frogs, you know, butterflies, things like that, and a little kid running after something, and all of a sudden, they're in the water, and now we have a drowning. And there's, I don't see anything on here, and I really have a concern about that.
We evaluated a lot of the other regulations within, not only Wake County, but throughout the area. And with the exception of situations where there's a very steep pitch into the stormwater pond, or there's an adjacent retaining wall associated with the pond, almost none of them required any sort of fencing. Part of it was for maintenance access, part of it was for aesthetics. Additionally, based on the research that we found, that while you would think it'd be a greater concern, a greater safety risk, it actually hasn't been within this, within this region of North Carolina.
Do you have, and I don't remember, we discussed this before, do you have maximum slopes for these buffer zones that are staged? Because some of the, what are they called now, BMPs are...
CMs.
Whatever. Whatever, are now pretty steep in some of these neighborhoods and some of these developments that we're in. So if we're going towards these natural buffers, do we have any verbiage in any of our ordinances that say we can only be maximum of this slope?
Not within our ordinances, but part of the rationale with having the plantings meet the NC State's Extension Office, there's maximum and water depths that those can go into, and in order for that shelf to work, to accommodate those plantings, there are pitch requirements associated with that. It doesn't fully address that pitch, and that's going to be, have to be something that we're going to have to evaluate later on in terms of our engineering standards.
Okay.
Because that goes into a much greater stormwater control standard.
Any other questions from the planning board? Now we'll take public comment. Do we have any wishing to speak in favor? Do we have any wishing to speak against? Do we have anyone wishing to speak for or against? Hearing none? If there's no one else to speak, I will close the public hearing and refer this matter to the planning board for consideration. Is there a?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I was getting to that.
Sorry.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Leading adjourn.